Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here. And with us tonight, we have the Girl Scouts who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Item two is the consent doc. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular Parks Board meeting held December fifth, twenty twenty three. Item C, accept four hundred point oh three square feet of permanent right-of-way and third three thousand eight hundred and forty point two four square feet of temporary construction easement from Jeremy S. Larson and Lindsay N. Larson for the construction of the South Bryant and Southeast Fourth Street and drainage improvement project. Accept four hundred point ten square feet of permanent right-of-way and three thousand forty point twenty square feet of temporary construction easement from Robert E. Rogers, revocable living trust from for construction of the Southeast Bryant or yeah, South Bryant and Southeast Fourth Street Drainage Improvement Project. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four in the amount of three million nine hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars and thirty seven cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion is second. We call the vote.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item three, consider approval of an agreement with Pinnacle Consulting Management Group, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand fifty dollars for the right-of-way acquisition services for Northeast Twelfth Reconstruction Project from I thirty-five to Eastern Avenue and south to northeast Ninth Street.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a project that is a, we received about seven point nine million from ACOG, so it'll have ODOT funding. Therefore, we have to follow all of the right, all of the ODOT requirements as far as acquisition of right-of-way on this particular project. And this, this contract includes so all right-of-way staking for approximately fifty, fifty-one parcels. There are a total of twenty-nine parcels. Some have temporary constructions, some have permanent or construction, temporary construction easement, and then some have permanent right-of-way. So we'll have to stake those. We have to have two appraisals, one appraiser that does the actual appraiser, and then ODOT requires an appraiser to be hired to review the appraisal and then the right-of-way acquisition process. So Pinnacle has a lot of experience with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, and we would recommend approval of the contract.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. We call the vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item four, consider approval of amendment number two in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars to the, to the agreement with Garver LLC for additional design services and legal descriptions for the Eastern Avenue Reconstruction Project from Northeast Twelfth Street to north to Southeast Nineteenth Street.
The changes or additional design work that are, were requested, they're requesting fees for include the intersection of Northeast Twelfth Street and Eastern Avenue from actually Ninth Street, Northeast Ninth Street on Eastern goes up and then back east on, on Twelfth Street to Flicker Ridge. The original project was set up to just do panel replacements on the Twelfth Street portion from Flicker Ridge to the intersection of Twelfth Street and Eastern. And as we got into it and also received the additional money, it was felt that let's go ahead and, and do the full reconstruction of that intersection. So it required additional design of the intersection and the improvements. In addition, the intersection is very, very crowded with utilities. And so what we're trying to do with our water relocations is utilize the retail parking lots in the area to acquire easements through there. So they have to prepare additional legal descriptions as part of this, for this project. We'd recommend approval of the amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item five, consider approval of amendment number two in the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to the agreement with CH Guernsey and Company for additional design services for Southwest Thirty-Four Street Widening and Reconstruction Project from I thirty-five to Broadway and north to Willow Pine.
Vice Mayor and Council, the changes in the additional services that they're going to provide, this particular project, we have broken up into, from one original project that included the entire length just described, we are now breaking the project, project into, into two phases. And we will bid, the plans will be prepared as two separate projects. So part of the funding for this is breaking the project up and having to do all of the services that are required for an initial project, but double those work services. The other portion of this is the, the box structure that comes under, from the north side of the, I believe it's the Lakewoods. And addition on the north side to the, to the south side, just west of Eastern, that, that it would be the southwest corner, there's a bunch of erosion and it's just eating away the entire lot in that area. And so what we decided, instead of just extend the easement across the road for four lanes, we would go ahead and take and build a box structure that goes back to the east to Eastern and then turn and go a little bit south along Eastern. And they're designing that box structure for, for this particular, to be able to take care and handle this. We would recommend approval of the change.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We call the vote.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item six, consider approval of a revised job description for Recreation Coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department. Change the job title from Program Coordinator and assign it, change the job title to Program Coordinator and assign it to pay grade one-ten of the salary table approved by City Council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, and in accordance with the budget approved by City Council for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for revised job description for Recreation Coordinator. The revision will include a title change to Program Coordinator and will allow the title and duties of the position to reflect changes in how the department provides programming for adult and youth recreation activities, special events, sports club development, and the development of programming for Childwatch, Kids Club, and the summer day camps. If this revised job description is approved, there will be no change to the pay grade assigned. Staff recommends approval and placement of this budgeted job description in pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table as approved by Council in twenty sixteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item setting, seven, consider approval of a revised job description for Environmental Service Manager in the Community Development Department and assign it to pay grade one-seventeen of the salary table approved by City Council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, and in accordance with the budget approved by City Council for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Community Development Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for revised job description for Environmental Services Manager. This revision became necessary after the resignation of the former employee in that position to reflect changes in the Community Development Department, including stormwater quality management activities. We also increased the education and experience requirements for this position. If the revised job description is approved, it would move from pay grade one-eleven to pay grade one-seventeen to more accurately, accurately account for these significant changes. Staff does recommend approval and placement of this budgeted job description in pay grade one-seventeen of the city's salary table as approved by Council in twenty sixteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We call the vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item eight, consider approval of a revised job description for Parks Maintenance Supervisor in the Parks and Recreation Department and assign it to pay grade one-thirteen of the salary table approved by City Council on June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, and in accordance with the budget approved by City Council for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for revised job description for Parks Maintenance Supervisor. This revision will allow the title and duties of the position to reflect changes that have occurred in the last several years, including the reporting relationship, the description of the position, and the specific supervisory areas assigned. If this revised job description is approved, there will be no change to the pay grade assigned. And staff recommends approval and placement of this budgeted job description in pay grade one-thirteen of the city's salary table as approved by Council in twenty sixteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item nine, consider approval of a sports agreement for the twenty, two thousand twenty-four Moore Youth Baseball Program held at Buck Thomas Park.
Vice Mayor and Council, we received approval to send out requests for proposals at the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. We received our four proposals. After review, we selected two of the organizations as finalists. After interviewing both organizations, it is our recommendation to select MYBA for twenty twenty-four. In reading their proposal and hearing their presentation, we feel that MYBA will be a much better organization going forward. They have reviewed our proposed lease agreement and did not raise any concerns, and they have paid all of their lease payments through, through this year. Recommend approval.
Anybody have any questions? Yep, yes. So I have two people signed up to speak. First up, Barry Williams. You'll come up and state your name, and you have five minutes. An address, please. I know you know the drill.
I hope everybody got my email that has these papers in there. Except for you, I didn't send you one, I'm sorry. But I'll give you these. I'm here tonight to talk to you about Moore Youth Baseball and Barry Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street, Moore, Oklahoma, seven-three-one-six-zero. I'm here tonight to talk to you about Moore Youth Baseball and the City of Moore's relationship. I know this is a new board, kind of, and I have nothing against Casey or Craig, they're just trying to keep the league going. But I would ask that the city that say that no one that has served on the board in recent years for MYBA be allowed to serve on the new board, except for Casey and Craig. I would also like for the city to audit MYBA for the past five years and find out what, if any, happened to all the money, and I'll explain this to you in a minute. I would also request that anybody that is required to have a background check in any sports organization be required to wear a lanyard with their name, just so people will know that these have had been background checked, because apparently they haven't been doing background checks on people for I don't know how long. And that's one of the requirements in the, in the contract. Now, the audit. Now, these figures I'm going to tell you come off the USSA website for tournaments, the MYBA tournament page for entry fees, and the MYBA annual report for twenty twenty-three. Would you be surprised if I told you that in twenty-twenty-three MYBA tournaments, they should have collected three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars? This is only for gate fees and tournament entry fees. They reported five thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars in income for twenty twenty-three tournaments. As a Moore citizen, I'm concerned about where the other three hundred thousand dollars went. Now, the city is supposed to oversee the program in December twenty twenty-three. It decided to terminate the agreement between the City of Moore and the MYBA. This was due to the MYBA not turning in monthly reports. Now, the city is saying they're going to keep better track. But let's take a look at the yearly financial statements for MYBA that is turned over to the city in the last three years, and these, and according to the contract, the city can request all financial documents and detailed accounts of financial operations and give them to the city's financial department. And if you're wondering why, if you look at the twenty-twenty-one financial statement from MYBA, it states that it paid the umpire in charge a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. This is on their financial report. Now, this is a, they pay at the plate. Before every game, each team has to pay the umpires. Why are we paying a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for an umpire in charge for one year? The, the tournament director got paid twenty-six thousand dollars, and MYBA was negative seventy-two thousand dollars at the end of the season, and they spent eleven hundred dollars on trophies. Now, in twenty twenty-two, the tournament income was fifty-eight thousand dollars. They didn't pay a tournament director according to their financial statements, and they spent twenty thousand dollars on trophies. The UIC was paid twenty-five thousand. Now, the, the MYBA league had a net income of fifty-five hundred dollars. Does anyone see why none of this makes sense? We go from the UIC getting paid a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars, and a tournament director that gets paid nothing in twenty-two and two. I'm sorry, but the city's not doing a good job auditing this. Now, in twenty twenty-three, the MYBA asked for new restrooms. The city architects, the city paid architects fifty thousand dollars for the plans, and now MYBA says, we don't want to pay that much for them. That according to the lease agreement, they're supposed to pay twenty-five percent. Did we collect twenty-five percent of the fifty thousand dollars, or did we just let it pass? Then we get to twenty twenty-three, and you've heard that they made fifty-eight hundred dollars on tournaments. But if you look at the team and gate entry fees, and each one of you should have got this in your email, and all I did was take the number of teams that were signed up on the USSA website, multiplied that times the team entry fee, and on the gate fees, which they do a, a pool play on Saturday, and then elimination tournament on Sunday. So all the teams have to come back. So I just doubled what the gate fee would be, two adults per child, and an average of ten players a team, which some have more.
Thirty seconds left.
So what I'm requesting is that the city council hire an independent auditor to go over the MYBA books for at least the last five years and find out what happened to these kids' money. And that's it. I thank you for listening.
Next up is Patrice Williams.
Patrice Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street. On number three of the contract, the new contract, under consideration, it says a payment, a full payment of sixty-four hundred dollars is due by April first, twenty twenty-four. Any monies that are not paid by the given dates can result in immediate termination of the contract. We know from previous contract, that probably won't happen. MYBA went a full year in twenty twenty-two without paying their lease, all year. Twenty twenty-three, they paid it late. The city allowed MYBA to, to sign a new contract in twenty twenty-three, even after MYBA did not pay in twenty twenty-two. On page two of the twenty twenty-three contract, the association will be, will be responsible to pay sixty-four hundred dollars to the city by the first tournament game of the twenty-twenty-three season. The full payment of sixty-four hundred dollars is due by the first tournament or league game of the two thousand three summer season. Failure to pay in full by the first tournament game will result in immediate, immediate termination of this agreement. The city did not hold MYBA accountable, and the city was not held accountable. The city terminated the contract in early December twenty twenty-three. There was no reason to terminate that contract. The contract was already terminated when they didn't pay. Number four, facility park improvement account. Lease payments made to the city and the trust will be dedicated for repairs of improvement for designed softball facilities. That should be changed to baseball, because it's baseball, not softball. Bookkeeping. Failure by the association to submit, to submit financial records to the city shall constitute a material breach of contract and may result in fines or even termination of this agreement. There were no fines for MYBA for not doing anything they weren't supposed to do, or they were supposed to do and chose not to. And that's according to MYBA records, financial records. City needs to be better. The city has several contracts and several, with several different companies and nonprofits. Are all contracts just signed and forgotten about? Does anybody oversee them? Because they're not this one, or they didn't. If the city wanted certain people out of leadership in MYBA, this was not the way to go about it. The city, the city should be ashamed of what they put the new board of when we'll be, MYBA through, coaches and parents. Even the city was not in compliance with the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Anybody else want to speak on this item?
Brooks, have we looked into some of the concerns for Mr. and Mrs. Williams?
We're in the process of doing that.
Okay. I, I mean, do we, is this something we want to? This is new information to me.
Our, our recommendation is after, after reviewing the four proposals that were submitted, the interview on the two finalists, discussion with myself, Parks Director Sue Wood, Assistant Parks Director Whitney Wathen, three of the members from the Parks Board, the recommendation was to move forward. We stand by that recommendation and would hope that the council would approve this tonight.
Okay.
And then I, I think, I mean, it's our hope that moving forward, we will keep a better accounting and better look on the, what, what's going on at MYBA, whoever has the contract.
We've already developed better auditing and correction methods.
I'm, I'm willing.
Yes, it's already been changed.
I want to probably move forward with voting to approve it, but I would like to definitely follow up with the concerns of Mr. and Mrs. Williams and make sure that those are addressed. And, because it may lead to us revisiting this if, you know, we find any issues.
Yep. And, and in, in our packet, does it show, I'm sorry, I don't know if it still shows baseball.
We made a corrected copy.
The corrected, corrected version is in there.
Okay. I don't want to lose my place, so I don't want to go double-check it, but perfect. Anybody want to make a motion or not?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Adam made the motion, so you seconded Louis?
I did not make a motion.
He did not make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item ten, consider approval of the Sports Association Agreement for twen, two thousand twenty-four for Moore Youth Soccer Program at, held at various city parks.
Vice Mayor and Council, the next three items are renewals of the agreements that we have set up for the soccer program, softball program, and the football program. They are renewing their agreements and are exactly as the baseball agreements are.
The, the new baseball agreements, so these mirror?
They mirror, absolutely.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Consider approval of, of Sports Association Agreement for two thousand twenty-four for Moore Girls Softball, Girls Softball Program at Buck Thomas Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item twelve, consider approval of a Sports Association Agreement for the two thousand twenty-four Moore Football Program held at Buck Thomas Parks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item thirteen, consider reappointing Janie Mylum to the Board of Adjustment to serve a three-year term beginning August twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Yeah, it should.
August twenty twenty-four.
No, that's completely fine. Vice Mayor and Council, this is a housekeeping item. Since the Board of Adjustment does not meet unless there are actual items to consider, we have not met since before August twenty twenty-three. Yes. So this would be a reappointment of Janie Mylum to the Board of Adjustment, serving a three-year term that is retroactive to August twenty twenty-three. And just as an FYI, this would be her final appointment before she is cycled off the committee.
Is that permanently cycled, or is there two-year wait, one year?
Three, it's a one term, so she would have to be off for three years, and then she could reapply after that.
And that applies to all the commissions.
That's correct.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item fourteen, consider approval of ordinance number ten forty-eight twenty-four, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Four, Article H, Section twelve dash four sixty-two of the Moore Land Use Development Code by adding tattoo and body piercing parlors as a special use permit establishing use restrictions and establishing special use revocation process, providing for severability, and providing for repealer.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up from the discussion that we had on January sixteenth. This proposed ordinance is to create a new special use permit for tattoo parlors. They would be allowed in the C-two through I-one with a planning commission and city council approval only. The special use permit would have some restrictions. It would be fifteen hundred feet from any other tattoo parlor or any other objectionable use, which is defined in the ordinance as pawn shops, plasma, blood donation centers, food banks, those kind of uses. Additionally, there would be limits on the hours of tattooing, limited to between nine AM and nine PM. The special use permit would expire when businesses change ownership, or when they move, or when they cease operations. And the special use permit can be revoked or suspended by city council after a twenty-day notice to permitting for any good cause. And included in the good cause would be any violation of city code, state law, or federal law. Now, just as a full transparency, this ordinance does conflict with some existing codes. So it is more stringent than our current ordinance for new tattoo parlors. So if you are a tattoo parlor who might be located in a C-five or C-six, today you can just go in after a occupancy permit is issued. If this ordinance was approved, then you would have to go in front of planning commission and city council. It also creates two, I would say, classes of tattoo parlors. You would have the new ones that have the restrictions of the hourly operation and the revocation or suspension of license. But then you would have four of our, we only have four tattoo parlors existing in Moore. They would not have these restrictions. So you would be creating those conflicts. So a reason that city council can suspend or revoke a special use permit in the proposed ordinance is for noncompliance with city code. And just to touch briefly on that, this item was brought up because of a specific application for the Dragons Den Tattooing at twenty-one-hundred Northeastern. Just in full transparency, since they began their zoning process to get the use on review, city staff has been called out at least five times for illegal tattooing at that location. We've issued citations on two instances where we actually saw them performing the tattooing in the office. They've been requested numerous occasions to not conduct their business while this process is taking place, and they've chosen not to do that, to disregard our warnings. So they were issued citations, they were operating tattooing without the proper zoning, they were operating without a valid occupancy permit, and they were performing tattoo without a valid city license, business license. We have since heard that this weekend they relocated to a location in Oklahoma City. And knowing this, I recommend that we table this proposed ordinance to give some additional time, an undetermined amount of time at this point, for staff to research this issue and to come up with an ordinance. for staff to research this issue and to come up with an ordinance that would not have these conflicting regulations. It may be, maybe the council does prefer to keep the existing code as is. It's worked since 2007, and it does give council review in the most sensitive zoning districts, which would be C2 through C4. These are the zoning districts that are most likely to be, to abet the residential homes, but it does allow tattooing by right in C5 and C6. And again, this has worked for many years. Council may decide just to keep it as is for now. We can always revisit this at a later time. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Give me an example of C5 or C6 zoning area currently to date.
Certainly. So C6 is only downtown. It's our downtown zoning district. And when I say downtown, I mean Old Town. The C5 is located, there's a corridor of it along 12th Street. 12th and Janeway has C5 zoning. There is also C5 zoning along Shields. And there is C5 zoning spattered about. Some of it is along the I-35 corridor along where, like Main Street to the Onqiu has some C5 zoning.
Have we had any issues in Old Town?
We have not had any complaints in Old Town or any other tattoo parlors that we have existing. We just haven't heard from them, citizens complaining.
Are any of the other ones right next to a neighborhood?
They do not abut a residential. This one would have abutted the backyards of residential homes.
So I think I would, in the future, I think I would like for us to address that distance.
Okay, yep, absolutely.
Tabling?
Yeah, yeah, I'm totally fine.
Yeah, I think we should.
How about we make a motion to table item 14?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Thank you, Elizabeth. Elizabeth, you've done a tremendous amount of work on this. I even bothered her on vacation, and I apologize. Well, now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 15, the consent doc, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held January 16th, 2024. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year 2023, 2024 in the amount of $1,065,826.98.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item 16, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of 1,404 Polycarts from Sierra Container Group in the amount of $86,442.78 as the most responsible quote.
Vice Mayor and Council, yes, I know it's 404. Last time I was asked why 404. This is for the purchase of two orders of Polycarts. Each order is 702. I don't know why.
700, not 700.
So this will be two orders. We are going through Polycarts faster than usual, and this is partly due to new developments and people requesting for additional Polycarts and some of the defects that we found on the old Polycart. So we solicited from three different vendors, and this one, they used virgin resin, so that makes the Polycarts better. The quality is better, and we are not seeing any returns from those. So that's why we chose this one.
So the likelihood of us getting these is good?
Yeah.
Okay. So no delays?
No.
Okay. Motion?
Needing them due to requests and not due to damage and?
Yeah, all the above, yes. Yes, request.
I have the old version. I think I got mine in 2000, and so I have the score. And I mean, you can't destroy that thing.
Oh, you got the circa 2000, Mommy.
Yeah.
Mine's not, mine.
This is, this is the newer and better, improved.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Well, now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 17 is a consent doc. Receive and approve minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held January 16th, 2024. Approve payment of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of $23,328 for CBR number 2050001071 to John Michael Roush, and authorize payment on the Adverorum tax rule. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year 2023, 2024 in the amount of $573,942.34.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Well, now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item 18, new business. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. I have two people signed up to speak. Christopher White, if you'll come up and state your name and address, and then you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Christopher White. I'm a resident at 1316 Northwest 9th Street in Moore, 73170. Myself and my family have been taxpaying citizens of the city of Moore since 1980, and that consists of six residences here in the city of Moore right now currently is my family. I was terminated. I worked for the sanitation department from June 5th until October 10th, and I was terminated without notice. I had not been written up, not been reprimanded, not damaged any property of the city or any resident. We've never had a problem with tardiness or missing work. I missed work two times and had doctor's notes for that. And I was called in one day, and I was terminated. I was told that I was being terminated, and I asked it on what grounds, and they said, "We don't have to give you a reason." And then I was escorted off the property by two more police officers and told if I come back on the property that I'm trespassing. So I was treated like a criminal and was still never given a reason why I was being terminated. I was told that I was under a probationary period for a year and that I signed this agreement that they could terminate me without cause. In comparison, another man that was hired before me, about five weeks before me, had gone through training and was put in a side loader truck to dump trash. His first week out, he totaled somebody's car, a resident's car, and took out two break mailboxes with the trash truck. And then when I started working there four weeks later, you couldn't get the man to show up to work two days in a row. And he was never written up and never terminated. He ended up quitting on his own fruition. So this brings me, if you want me to talk about that more, I'd be happy to do that, but I've only got five minutes, so I'm going to move on. Daniel Sutherland, the head of sanitation department, made up his mind early on that he didn't want me to be there because I had said some things about coming down here to City Hall to talk about the condition of the trash trucks and why we were the only vehicles in the entire city fleet that didn't have air conditioners when it's 105 degrees outside and we're sitting on top of a hot engine. And it almost put me in ICU, is what the doctor told me. I can tell you that, too, if you want to give me more time. But so I was put between Dan and his wife, his niece's husband, who Dan hired to work in the department, and was terminated. And I brought up the nepotism policy to Brian Miller and to Christine Jolly and tried to talk to Brooks Mitchell about it, but I've never been allowed to talk to Brooks Mitchell about it. Tried to talk to Tony Mensa about it. They were all made aware before Thanksgiving that this man was working for the sanitation department and that his uncle was the head of the sanitation department and that that was a violation of the nepotism policy. At one point, Brian Miller told me that they were investigating it, looking into it. I don't know what he was investigating because it took me less than five minutes to go on Facebook, look up the employee, see who his wife was, see who she's saying Happy Mother's Day to, look at her mother's maiden name and see that it was the same as Daniel Sutherland's, and that it was Dan's sister. So he's definitely related through marriage on Dan's side of the family. So it took me less than five minutes to do that. They said they were investigating it, okay? The last thing that I was told is that this man is being moved to another department. So the city paid this man to train to be a sanitation driver, and now he's being paid to train so that they can move him to another department when he lied on an application. Three places on the application here, it asks if you have a relative working for the city of Moore and all that stuff. And it says right here in the nepotism policy that if you lie on your application, that you're not qualified to work for the city of Moore. There's three places on here he would have had to lie, or he didn't lie, and Tony Mensa, Brian Miller, and Christine Jolly failed to do their job and allowed this man to work there. So it's one or the other. But the fact of the matter is, is the man's related to Dan Sutherland, who was the head of the sanitation department. And is still being allowed to work for the city of Moore. I didn't violate any policies. I didn't lie on my application, and I was terminated and treated like a criminal when I was terminated. But this man's being allowed to work at the city, and we're paying to train him for another job so we can move him to another department. And the nepotism policy is there because of fairness. Dan Sutherland knew this policy was there. He's been working for the city for almost 40 years, and he totally and willingly and knowingly disregarded the policy and hired his niece's husband anyway. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tom Poiser. Did I say that right? If you'll state your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
Hey, my name is Tom Poiser. I live on Farm Road here in Moore, the city of Moore. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Councilman. I'm one of the several citizen volunteers at the Moore Police Department, which was started in January of 2023 by the direction of Chief Todd Gibson, which is supervised by Captain Chris Maddox, and which is, all of the volunteers are coordinated by Mrs. Ann Davis, who is also present here tonight. I'm here tonight to highlight a few of the events by the Moore Police Community Service Unit, in which we volunteers occasionally help. They've included burgers and badges, which fed approximately 750 people this last July, the Neighborhood Night Out at the Regal Movie Theater, picking up and distributing 240 coats and jackets to the children in need, serving a Thanksgiving meal to families with food insecurities, and especially the 13th Annual Event of Shop with a Cop. I know most of these community events are briefly acknowledged by someone on the city council, but I want to emphasize how important and appreciative these events are by the community. I was asked to personally deliver certificates of appreciation to the many, many businesses in the city of Moore that financially contributed to the event of Shop with a Cop. After introducing myself as a volunteer in the Moore Police Department, there was an immediate positive response to my presence. And when I told them why I was there to present them with a certificate of appreciation for their financial contribution, there was also a reaction of tremendous gratitude. They told me positive stories and other thanks for the police department and how steadfast they want to continue their support. So I thought each of you should know this a little bit more about the positive relationships and the appreciation for this community donors and how they dedicate and how they are dedicated to helping the citizens of Moore. Thank you for this time to share and bring to you this attention to some of the charitable events of the Moore Police Department and what they participate in, and all of the officers who dedicate their time and efforts to the community that has such an impact on so many. Thank you.
Thanks much. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Item B, items from city council members. I've gotten several calls with questions about the Underpass, and it's on our website, but you kind of have to click about three places to get to it. So I wonder if it couldn't be on, like, a box just right there on the front. It's under, like, the current projects, but just so it's super easy to find on the website. Thank you. Item C is items from the city trust manager.
The police department moved into their Police Advancement Center there on 12th and Janeway starting this last week, so they're still fine tuning a couple of things. But I've been over there a couple of times. It looks really good. Well, congrats to Chief Gibson and his team. We'll have a grand opening probably within a month or so. So look forward to everyone doing that. And then week from tomorrow is Election Day. We've got the mayor's race and a Ward II race, so encourage everyone to go vote.
Yes, go vote.
Thank you.
Item 19 is the executive session. Section 307, Title 25 Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. Is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending case number CJ2024-38 filed in Cleveland County District Court by Jim Buxton on behalf of William and Anna Urban against the city of Moore, and authorization of legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statute 307B4.
Make a motion we convene to executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We are convened to executive session. Yes, we are convened to executive session. Executive session, please note that everyone that was present before is still present. Item C, or item D is action.
Big motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Second.
A second, the motion?
We have a motion is second, we call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item twenty is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I was about to say, we need to gavel for.
Call the vote, please.
Melissa.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith? Yes, Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Oh, I would love a gavel.
Yeah, we need to get you a gavel. Water, water in this chamber.
Do we not have one? I don't know if we do. But I would, I mean, I would be drunk with power with a gavel.